We welcome everybody that can to attend. Thank you. Take a motion to adjourn by Deputy Supervisor Charles, Second Councilman Rossman, all in favor. Aye. Hopes of standing by vote of four to zero, we stand adjourned. So at this time, I'll welcome the village board, the mayor and the village board of the village of New Square to join us up here on the desk. And we will shortly start the, please excuse me, no booing, no comments. It's totally inappropriate. We're having a public hearing. Everyone will get a chance to speak, but please, no, no interjections, no rudeness. It's not necessary. It doesn't really help anybody. Again, if people boo, I'm going to ask the police to escort them out. It's as simple as that. I, you have every opportunity to speak. This is not a wrestling match. Just ask the board to come this way. Yeah. Into the microphone, sure. Exactly. Uh, well, are they, are you sure? Because, okay. Yeah, you don't have to move because it's fine. It's fine. You know, it's okay, right? Yeah, it'll be, it'll be fine. No, no, bring it up, come back. Yeah.
Michael.
Come over here. Right here, Michael. We got you.
Michael.
Yeah, sit here. Oh, yeah, yeah, let's do this.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody. So this is a joint public hearing of the town board of the town of Ramapo and the village board of the village of New Square to hear a petition for annexation of four parcels from the town of Ramapo into the village of New Square. I'm just trying to think of the procedure. I think the first thing we need to do is we, do we need to take attendance?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll ask the clerk to take the Ramapo Town Board attendance again. Supervisor Speck?
Yep.
Deputy Supervisor Charles?
Yeah.
Councilman Rossman? Councilman Winunu?
Here.
Councilman Weissmandl? Ramapo Town Attorney? And Ramapo Town Clerk? So we have a quorum from the town board. So I'll ask the village board, I don't know if you, do you have your clerk? You don't have your clerks here? Oh, you do? Okay. So I'll ask your clerk to call the attendance, call the roll for the village.
May your spit sir? Plus younger.
Very good. Thank you. So I think the first thing we need to do under the, the rules that are set out in the general municipal law regarding annexation hearings. Oh, well, well, before we do that, I think, I think the combined boards have to select a chairman to preside over the meeting. I'm perfectly happy to preside over the meeting if there's no objection or if anyone else wishes to, they're, they're welcome to as well instead. But if there's no objection, then I'll, I'll preside. So this time, I'll call upon our attorney, Ms. Slater, for the town to introduce any notices or documents into the record.
All right, so I have a few exhibits that need to be entered into the record. Exhibit one is the petition of KTD Home Ownership Maximization Enterprise Core at Forty-Five Bypass, Stereocord Properties LLC and Rafa Health Center. Two is the notice of joint public hearing regarding the annexation. Three is the affidavit of publication from the Journal News. Four is the affidavit of posting by the town of Ramapo Clerk. Five is the affidavit of mailing of the public hearing notices to all of the property owners, including the Molson Fire District and the superintendent of the East Ramapo Central School District. All of those exhibits are available in the town clerk's office.
Thank you, Ms. Slater. So are we able to proceed with the hearing?
Yes, all of the notice requirements have been satisfied and we can proceed to the public hearing.
Very good. So at this time, we'll open up the hearing. I believe there's an attorney here representing the petitioners, Mr. Loftus. So I'll ask you if you could just put your appearance on the record and then give you an opportunity to present.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Patrick Loftus, for Laurel Road, New City, appearing for Ira Emanuel, who is the attorney of record on this matter. So you have before you, as you described, a joint application to both the Ramapo Town Board and the New Square Village Board to annex four lots currently in the town of, town of Ramapo into the village of New Square. You have, as part of the package, Mr. Emanuel's description of the various lots. There are three lots on the northwest corner abutting the village of New Square and one lot on the southwest corner. The lots on the north, people I'm sure are curious about why this is, application is, is before you and what the future holds. The idea is that the, the lots on the northwest corner are tied to an industrial park that is within the village of New Square. So the idea is that eventually, although there's no application pending, eventually those lots will be somehow developed with that industrial park. Likewise, the southwest corner within the village of New Square is the Rafa Health Center. The lot that is proposed to be annexed is designed or is earmarked to be eventually part of that complex, specifically parking. So again, there are no development applications pending. Obviously, those, any future development would be subject to the full municipal planning process. It just seems to make sense jurisdictionally that they be within the village in New Square. I'll note, just for the record, that the application isn't on, the, the subject matter's an unlisted matter for secret purposes. There are, there is at least one representative of the applicants that wanted to address, address the boards. And we're certainly available for questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. At this time, do either of the boards have any questions for, for council? Okay. Then if you have your client, we'll give them the opportunity to speak.
Hi, good evening. I'm Alexandra Crower. I'm the chief strategy officer and also general counsel for Rafa Health Center. Thank you all for being here tonight and taking the time to consider our application. Just on behalf of Rafa Health Center, I just wanted the council and the public to know, we're a 501(c)(3) organization. We're a federally qualified health center, which means that we receive federal grant funding to serve the underserved, medically underserved and low-income populations. We're open to everybody. We see some folks from New Square. We see, we have four locations in Rockland County, two up in Sullivan. We're really here to serve all of the county and the surrounding area. The lot that's in question, it's right adjacent to the rest of our main street facility. It's right adjacent to our parking lot. We're in the middle of constructing a new 15,000 square foot women's health center and anticipate that eventually down the road, the lot in question will be used to parking. There's, we have a lot, parking's a premium. So really putting the lot in part of New Square and part of the main parcel just is sort of logical and I think an administrative ease for a 501(c)(3) organization. So thank you. If there's any questions specific to Rafa, I'm happy to address them.
Thank you. Does anybody from the other board have questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Loftus, do you have anyone else here on behalf of the petitioners who wishes to speak?
You. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Feder. I'm here to speak about the proposed annexation for four parcels from the town of Ramapo into the village of New Square. I'm not part of the village's leadership. I'm an individual representing Rafa Health Center and a light industrial park. Rafa is a community health center, serving over 100,000 patients from across the region. With their recent expansion, they need this land for central parking. This annexation is simply to unite the facility, which is already in the village. The joint venture for the industrial park is about creating jobs and economic growth for all. I want to acknowledge that I, that I understand there are deep and complex feelings in the community regarding other issues. I hear your concerns, however, the purpose of this hearing is to consider the specific merits of this annexation petition. And I hope we can all agree to focus on the public benefits these projects will bring. The facts on, are, on the ground are clear. Facilities in New Square, like Rafa, benefit everyone. The villages, the village has groceries and other stores where people who live outside its boundaries shop. Many of the doctors and nurses at Rafa and many other employees in the village live in surrounding towns. They are not outsiders. They are our neighbors. These projects are a clear public benefit and should be judged on their own merits. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. If there's no one else representing any of the petitioners, I'll open it up to the public. We'll call you up to speak. You can come first, sir. I'll just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less in duration and start off with your name and address.
My name is Aaron Colladney. I live at fourteen Oakwood Terrace in Spring Valley, New Hempstead. My question is, I understand one of the five annexations is for the parking lot, which, I mean, I don't understand why it should be, what the difference is if it's in the village or out of the village. If it's for the good of the community, I'm assuming the town will also approve a parking lot. As far as the other four, which are further away, it does not make sense to say that it is for the parking. If it's on the other side of the area, it's, it's like beyond it. If, if you, I don't know how to say it exactly. My question is, what exactly does the community gain by the annexation versus no annexation? Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Ms. Muniz.
Deborah Muniz, Five Rose Hill Road, Sufferin. So I reviewed the packet of material regarding the annexation. And based upon the materials provided, my main comments are that the public hearing should be adjourned to a date certain, which provides sufficient time for the town of Ramapo itself, the village, and through request to the petitioners to compile additional documentation to support this annexation prior to closing the public hearing. So in the packet, I saw that you had the SEAF Part One before you. I have some comments on that. I think some of them are not answered. They're, they're answered like there won't be a problem when you guys actually need to evaluate a lot of the statements that are in there. But there's no Part Two, there's no Part Three, there's nothing proposed. So there's no, nothing to comment. And there's no supporting documentation to be able to actually do any kind of evaluation. So the key thing that's missing here is obviously there's development that wants to occur. That development can occur either under the town of Ramapo zoning or it can occur under the village zoning. And there's really nothing in this packet that explains what are the differences between those zonings and what could potentially happen on one versus another. Obviously, you know, if you can't develop under the town of Ramapo, a certain industrial complex and you want to, then there's going to be impacts. So there's not sufficient information to be able to do any kind of secret analysis. There's no provided explanations as to why this request is being made. It's just, this is what we want to do. And the, while it may be perceived to be a benefit to them, the question is, there's no perceived benefit. There's not even a, you know, a premise saying, here's what we're saying is of benefit to the town of Ramapo. So since there are no statements of public benefits, and I don't think you should turn it down because there's nothing, I mean, you can turn it down because it's not supported, but I think you should request this of the petitioners to justify what's, what's going on. In terms of the comparisons, so that you can understand like what would really happen, you should be comparing, obviously, the zoning, obviously assessments, what's going to happen to the assessments of the land under various choices, taxes, the services, you know, the impacts to the municipalities themselves and to the residents that should, that are expected to occur. I think that the villages and the town need to understand your responsibility to do this kind of analysis and it's completely reasonable. I don't know if it's lawful, that's up to your attorney, but it seems to me that these are expenses that should be borne by the petitioners. And I just wanted to say that with respect to Rafa, I'm, you know, I go there, they need more parking. The town of Ramapo has already approved parking for, parking lots adjacent to lots in other municipalities. You did this in Spring Valley, near Pasgak Ridge. So, you know, we've already proven that the town can approve parking lots for projects that are in other municipalities. And so that's obviously not a reason to justify this. I'll submit my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and the woman in the back. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Esther Malik. I live at twenty-two Woodson in the village of New Hempstead. And our concern about the annexation, we have a big problem with mile houses of people in New Square buying up these houses and jamming them with people. It's bringing down our property values. It's making our neighborhoods unsafe. If they annex more land, how do we know this problem's not going to get any bigger? We're already frustrated as it is. No one seems to be taking any action. Is it the town? Is it the village? Where does, our, our issue is where does it stop? It needs to have stopped yesterday. Can New Square stop with harassment? Can they stop moving people into our neighborhoods and lowering our values? We understand that they do a great job for the community, but they also have to look at the other side of it also, that we're, we're all being affected. And it's just not going to stop in the village of New Hempstead. It's all around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who, who's next? A gentleman in the video.
Good evening, members of the town board. I'm here to voice my strong opposition to the proposed annexation of the four properties to the village of New Square. First, I just want to be clear about what's being requested. So supposedly, there's one parcel that they're trying to make into a parking lot for Rafa, which.
Excuse me, sir. Name and address, please.
I've run Goldstein Thirteenth Flynn Drive. Supposedly, there's one parcel that they're trying to make into a parking lot for Rafa Healthcare, which is very nice, and there's absolutely no reason why that can't be done under the town of Ramapo currently. I'm sure you guys would be more than happy to help them out with that. So that's an irrelevant annexation. And the other three parcels are, have yet to be defined why exactly they want them. And in our book, undefined use is a huge red flag because once these properties are in, annexed into New Square, they could be turned into anything, specifically commercial buildings, industrial buildings. I believe there was a time when they tried to get these properties for some kind of chicken processing plant. So I wonder if that's what they're trying to do this time, since we don't know, we have no way of knowing. Specifically, the town, the village of New Square has never prioritized the well-being of its neighbors and the level of disregard that the village of New Square has for the surrounding neighborhoods is appalling. Every time this village expands its footprint, what follows is overcrowding, garbage, crime, and illegal conversion of single-family homes into multi-resident SROs, often, often housing undocumented tenants in unsafe conditions. Why on earth would we even entertain the possibility of handing over more land to people who have repeatedly demonstrated zero regard for their neighbors? The Rafa parking lot is just an excuse and it's just a feel-good way to try to convince everyone that they have the greater Muncie community interest at heart. The bigger concern is the three undefined parcels next to an existing commercial site. Once annexed, the village can designate them for anything it chooses, a warehouse, an industrial facility, expanded commercial operations, and we, the residents of the town of Ramapo, who live nearby, will have zero say, no transparency, and no recourse. Let's not kid ourselves. This annexation is about control and control in New Square is, is wrested in the hands of a very small number of individuals with their own interests in mind. I want to raise multiple objections clearly for the record. There is no defined use for the three of the parcels. We want to know what they're hiding. Past annexations and applications have led to industrial and commercial proposals that do not belong in residential areas. The track record of housing conversions in New Square proves that they cannot be trusted to follow zoning or building laws. Any, any and every expansion of the village has increased traffic, garbage, and crime in the surrounding neighborhoods. And the annexation will strip the town of its oversight and hand power to a village government that has constantly ignored the needs of anyone outside of its leadership circle.
Who would like to speak next? A gentleman over in the middle.
My name is Benyaminder Beatt, sixty-seven Westview Road, New Hempstead. This is the third time I'm standing at this podium. Unfortunately, the situation in our areas has only gotten worse. I'm not here in opposition to Skver or its Kahila. They should live peacefully within their borders. They have every right to, just like I have a right to live in my neighborhood. What I am speaking about is the impact of this annexation and the way that this expands the so-called ear-mile policy. What is the ear-mile policy? I don't think I ever explained it well enough to the, to the board. This clearance says that one square mile that they inhabit must be surrounded by an exclusion zone. If, if we're just real about it for a minute, we can call it the Jew-free zone. That's what it is. We don't want Jews living near us. Now, from, this is accomplished by destabilizing established and peaceful neighborhoods by turning them into wastelands. When New Square expands, the exclusion zone expands. That means more homes are purchased and converted into illegal SROs and filled with lowlifes. And they destabilize our, our entire neighborhoods. Now, this may sound abstract, but it's not. This is real life. In my own neighborhood, women are afraid to walk to the mikvah on Friday night. Now, some of you may not be aware or not even appreciate what that means, but understand this, it's a frightening state of affairs when one's safe neighborhoods are no longer safe for women and for children. And that's what it looks like when communities around, around square continue to erode. These three residential parcels under the, under this petition, eight thirty-four and eight forty-two North Main Street and three with Stereocord are all zoned for single-family use and annexing them into New Square will further destabilize the area. We know the pattern. Once under Skver's control, these properties will not remain single-family and they will continue to abuse us. Skver has consistently disregarded their neighbors' concerns. Every inch of control they gain is weaponized for their own interests, never for the surrounding communities. So I ask, if Skver as a whole ignores zoning, ignores codes, ignores safety, why should we trust them with another inch of land? What benefit is there to the neighbors of these properties? None. Seven hundred North Main Street, on the other hand, the Rafa site, it's a little bit different. Rafa does serve the community in a wonderful way, and they definitely need more parking. We all know that. And like a few of the others said already, that can be accomplished through the, through the town. I'm sure the town of Ramapo would be happy to provide them the parking lot that they so, so much need. There's other things I would ask the town of Ramapo to consider if they do make that into a parking lot, and that is to create a turning, special turning lane into Rafa, not only to the main entrance to New Score, which is an absolute safety disaster. Doesn't make any sense how we could have thousands of people living in a place that has one proper entrance, which is terrible, and one entrance, which is like not even proper. Doesn't even make any sense. I don't understand that. We need to have a right-hand turn lane. We need, and there's also a bus stop, which always, a bus that always stops right in front of Rafa. I know I'm over my time. And it stops and holds up traffic for minutes on end. I would suggest that the town as well, go ahead and widen the road over there if we can, to allow buses to pull over safely for people to get on and off. I beg you, Mr. Town Supervisor and the board, to please reject this annexation and step up the enforcement. We want to live safely and welcome all not divided by invisible but very real lines.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to speak next? Anybody? Oh, yes, sir.
Good evening. Yosef Rappaport, two seventy-four Hempstead Road. Before I start, I do want to say that Rafa Health Center is definitely a gem in the world. It's a beautiful place. They take care of sick people. They take care of the communities. And whatever we're talking about, it's not personal against Rafa Health Center. It's about the process and about the actual legal code of what's going on. So first of all, we see how many people we have here. I think each and every one. I think we can take account of the people sitting here and ask them, who wants to speak? And I guess everybody wants to stay here for probably another two hours if each one can speak three minutes, because this is the amount of people that are going to come up with, questions, issues, and they want to talk about it. The package that was submitted, and I think that we should leave emotions about what happens when one, one, one party takes a property and they don't tell us what, what they do with it. And somehow, somewhere down the road, we'll find out that whatever was talked about was a parking lot, but the rest of it was something else. I don't know if it's going to be a chicken factory or it's going to be a multifamily or who knows what it is. Guys, if you want to do something, be upfront with it. Take the entire project from beginning to end, show everybody what you want to do. Perhaps, maybe, people can work with it. Go ahead, you'll be able to put exclusions, you'll be able to work with it, just to say, we want to take the property and we'll figure out later on what we want to do with it. That doesn't work because the town of Ramapo can do whatever you want, the same thing on their own. Besides that fact, we don't know exactly what you do want to do with that area. But up here, in this area of state New York, we do like to see roads, we do like to see grass, we do like to see everything around it. And I don't know. Did anybody drive last, when was the last time people drove on Route forty-five and expect another two, three hundred cars driving on it in the same time? I mean, during the day, it's insane what's going on there. It's dangerous. You're going in on Route forty-five between New Square and New Hempstead Road? It is a very dangerous road. Environmental, were they tested, checked, everything? So I'm saying, forget a sign right now about who's New Square, what's New Square. New Squares are great guys. Rafa is an unbelievable organization, but the ABC of the steps that you want to take. Where are those documents? Where are the plans? No one got it. We got partial. So I think what the town of Ramapo has to say is, guys, it's not happening. Go do your homework, bring it back, and we'll figure it out from then, right then. Everybody, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? I see an arm raised in the middle of the, the side of the room. Yeah, yes, sir.
Michael Adler in nineteen Rensselaer Drive.
Say your name one more time.
Michael Adler, nineteen Rensselaer Drive. Eighteen Rensselaer Drive was recently raided by the village. There were twenty people living there. Twenty-one Rensselaer Drive was recently raided by the village. There were eight unrelated people living there. Twenty-three was also raided. They're evicting them. I don't know the details on that. I could tell you there are hundreds, at least three hundred and fifty, of these houses, two hundred of which the primary residence is in New Square. They're all illegally used as multifamily houses. Why would you think, forget the fact that code's not being enforced, I don't know what's going on with that. Why would you think of rewarding people that are doing this to our town and our village with more land? Thank you.
Yes, sir. In the back.
Okay, good evening. I'm not as sophisticated as a lot, I'm not as sophisticated as a lot of people who've spoken. I'm just going to say something very emotional.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry. One hundred Yoafactor, one hundred and ten Hempstead Road. Yeah, I love living in where we live in the village. It's a very, very special place. It's a very special, peaceful place. And it's not the America that you see on the TV, which is insane. However, that might not be what our future is. So New Square, I'm very conflicted standing in front of New Square. It's a very special place. My wife is a doctor at Rafa and is an My wife is a doctor at Rafua and is an amazing place. But it appears to be that whilst we, we actually think you're very hush of, got a lot of respect for New Square so much, but it seems that you're scared of us, which is like really bizarre because we're not your enemy. We're fellow Yidden. We want the same things as you. You don't need to be afraid of us. But when we're living in a place where every time a house goes on the market, we're like, oh, great. So now it's going to become an illegal house. There's going to be, as we said, multiple people living there. And it's very sad. It's not just sad for us. It's sad for those six families who are forced to live in one house. So I know a Hispanic family who have an apartment and they told me they are so happy, even though they can't afford it, that they are not living in a house of five other families because they've got young girls. They don't know who else is going to be living in those houses. It's very dangerous for them as well. So really, you're causing a major problem for all kinds of human beings. And this is not what the Torah wants from you. You don't have to be afraid of us. Very conflicted. Your own attorney said it's about what the future holds. So whilst you're talking about a parking lot and as the people of our community have already said, you don't need an annexation for that. Seems in American politics, this is what happens. They bring a bill and they just shove everything under. And they give it in like one night before and there's five thousand, fifty thousand, sixty thousand pages. It's come like, seriously? Come on, we expect better of you? And we want better of you. We want good for you. You don't have to be afraid of us. And please just consider that we need a different approach to trying to get things through without knowing what our, what our future, as their attorney said, the future holds. We want to make sure that we live in a safe, peaceful area and it doesn't become the meshugah, crazy area that we see on the news. That's it. Thank you.
Uh, yes, sir, over there.
My name is Aaron Krasnow. I live at six Bonny Court. I think it's important to note that the one member that came to speak to New Square mentioned before any of us got up, that this is two separate things. What's happening with this annexation and what's happening with the air mile, two separate things. Why do you start with that? Why do you think we're coming to talk about that? Because it's very clear that everything with New Square is connected. Every piece that gets added, gets added on to their mile. And it has to stop and it has to stop now. And we all know the power that New Square has. It's the block vote. They get their votes all together, which is why many of you are sitting on this board here today. Well. But let me just say, every time you add to your mile and add to the air mile, this community becomes stronger. I met people in the last six months I never knew existed here because we're all united over the singular issue of you ruining our neighborhoods. So to all you elected officials, the more this mile expands, the more pissed off people is going to be sitting over here. And you could figure out what that means for block voting as we go along. Thank you very much.
I see somebody in the back. Is there a hand over?
If you all can, when you want to speak, fill out a form, put your name on it. Forms are on the table.
Hi, Don Yasiroid. I'm eighteen Bonny Court. It's interesting, the attorney, is he still here? He wouldn't be welcome in New Square. None of the people here would be allowed to live in New Square. Not one of them. I don't see anyone here. I'm looking around. Almost not a single person. The gentleman, Mr. Fetter here, he mentioned about the neighbors. You know, the people in Rafua are all neighbors, right? They all live around New Square. No one would live in New Square. They would not be accepted into, they would not be. It's, it's really interesting. None of the people on this side would be allowed to buy a home in New Square, right? None of them would be allowed to buy a home in New Square. None of them. And yet somehow they get to have this power over people outside the neighborhood and they can tell us how we dictate our lives. What's interesting also is I have on my block, there was a stabbing. I have kids. There was a stabbing on my block. Is that, is that something that you guys advocate for? A stabbing on my block? I, I seriously don't understand. I would love to have a nice conversation with you, but legally you guys have way more power than we'll ever have. And that's, that's really terrible. And I hope you like think about a stabbing on my block for my kids.
Does anybody else wish to speak now? Uh, yes, sir, in the back. Or the middle, I'm sorry, the man in the blue.
Ellie Weiner, thirty-two Greenridge Way. I'm going to be more pleasant than the last two guys. Mr. Supervisor, I'm turning to you regarding this annexation. Why are you caving? Why are you giving in to this annexation? Do you know that mathematically, the air mile is fifteen times the size of New Square itself? So now, by doing this, it's now sixteen. Then it'll be seventeen for the next thing. We do appreciate what Rafua Health Center does. I think everyone agrees on that. But there's a limit and things are out of control. Our neighborhood looks like a sanctuary city. I'm just going to stop there. I'm not going to go more details. Last night while my kids were in the backyard, my kids are asking me, why does it smell funny? It's not cigarettes. I don't need to explain to you what it is, but it constantly smells like marijuana all over the place in our neighborhoods. That's not what we signed up for. That's not accepted in a normal community. Wouldn't be accepted in yours, yours, or yours, or yours. So why is it by ours? Why do you have commercial trucks parked all over the property? All over the properties next to us? And this is being done maliciously, purposely, for some crazy higher hierarchy reason which is unknown or really known. If I wanted to live in South America, I would have moved there. And, you know, we've spoken to your staff, to you, and so far, nothing. A lot of chit chat. You know, I, you know, I would ask you, have you spoken to the mayor about it? Can you speak to the mayor about it? Maybe something can be done, but I'm not sure. Doesn't seem likely. And, and my last comment for you six, if there was one of these houses that we had next to us, one of them in your block next to you, how long would it last? Five seconds? Ten seconds? Tell me how long. The Chilah Hashem is incredible. I'm sorry.
Please. I'm going to ask.
Thank you.
Let the speaker speak. Thank you.
Moshe Sholgesser, three Flamingo Lane. Good evening, Mr. Speck. Good evening, Deputy Supervisor. Some of you know me as a former retired trustee of the village of New Hempstead. I've been living here for twenty years. I've been on the Board of Trustees in the village of New Hempstead for the last eight years and resigned a month ago. Part of my resignation included not being able to show my face around the community and the three synagogues I'm actively involved in due to the fact that I'm embarrassed as a village representation that we can do nothing about the fact that there are so many houses littering the neighborhood with SROs. Now. I'm not here to debate the fact that I've seen going around the groups and the chats whether or not people have these rights or the other rights and who's entitled to put anybody they want into their houses. They are. I own real estate as well. You are entitled to put whoever you want into these houses. However, we run into a problem when the people you're putting into these houses are being put in illegally and single-room occupation. These people are living dangerously. Dangerously for themselves has been stated. Dangerously for the fire department and the police departments that show up and have stated to residents that they are afraid to handle the situation on the spot as should be the residents who may be approaching these, these occupants. This is a dangerous situation for everybody involved. This is absolutely, it's profound that this hasn't been able to be handled. We couldn't do anything as a village. We've been fighting this all the way up to the state. You can't simply get rid of these people. You can't do anything about it. And therefore, one of the big reasons of me leaving was simply no longer having answers for my friends, for the constituents and for the residents of New Hempstead. I didn't look at any of the, any of the paperwork submitted for exactly what the annexation is, but has been said many times tonight. I'm simply standing against giving the people that are causing so much aggravation to the neighborhood at large, any additional space to do anything with until we have answers for what's going on here. We. We in New Hempstead collectively with the town that was going to give us a parcel next to the Cheder on New Hempstead Road to put up a park, a playground for my children that range between the ages of seven and now twenty-three, and we were fought by the entire neighborhood from putting in the park because they were concerned with what may lie in the park at night, looking into their windows, and what kind of lifestyle would be hanging around in the park. We could not do that. That was being given to us and we could do nothing about it. And here we are, not being able to do that. And this is going to sail through. And this is a hundred and fifty thousand times more dangerous. Have a good night.
Is there somebody else who wishes to speak now? Yes, sir, over there.
Shimri Berman, twenty-three Terry Lee Lane. Been a resident of New Hempstead for over twenty years. We talked about Rafua Health Center. My sister-in-law comes in from Israel. Six months out of the year to work there. It's a wonderful place. That's not the issue here. Let's not blind the people with that type of topic. For ten years, I carpoolled with people from New Square to Brooklyn every single day. Probably the best ten years of my professional life. It saddens me that I had no idea what's been happening over the last three to four years, if not more. I didn't believe it. I railed against it. But something is happening. And the SROs that we're talking about, there wouldn't be a standing room only situation here if something wasn't happening. I am firmly opposed to any type of annexation until we find out what is happening with the illegal housing, alleged illegal housing. And I. And until we can have a happy medium where people are able to do what, be able to live in the neighborhood that they are accustomed to while allowing certain housing to continue in illegal fashion, anything that New Square puts together on any type of submission should be immediately frozen and put to the side. Thank you.
I'm Ari Wolf, five-five-eight New Hempstead Road. So in terms of Rafua also, I agree, fantastic organization. My kids have used it. I've used it. My wife works there. She's an MP and we are all for that. Just addressing the issue that we didn't bring up, it was actually brought up first. That has nothing to do with what we're all here for, but it was the first thing that was mentioned tonight. So I can personally tell you of multiple homes in the area. Across the street from me, down the road from me, up the block from me, where the realtors and the sellers have been duped into believing that they're going to nice families. The only reason I got my home is because the lady who lived there, it was her childhood home. And we were a family coming in and she believed us. And somebody else came up and offered her more after we already had a signed agreement. And they said, why do you want it so bad? Are you moving in? Do you have a family? And he said, no. He said, we're going to rent it out, but why don't you take it? It's higher money. You have to present the offer. It was an off-market sale, so the lady who was representing the buyer said, no, I don't. You can get off the property. That's the only reason I got my home. There's another one, two people I see here. I know their neighbors were totally duped when they were selling the homes. They would send in, you know, a single lady, say she's a doctor with three kids. And then it gets flipped at closing and next thing you know, it's being rented out to fourteen, fifteen people. The only reason one of them is empty now and has four people is because the basement flooded and they had nowhere to live. Another one down the block, I see the neighbor here as well. It, I had the brother of somebody who lives in the neighborhood. He had an accepted offer, a deposit on the home. And then whatever happened between the realtor and the new purchaser, somehow magically the buyers rejected the offer. There was a legal fight to get the deposit back. They walked away with, I think, eighty grand more than what the original offer was because the New Square buyer was using it as her as the seller and the buyer's rep. And next thing you know, again, it's being rented out illegally in the neighborhood. So my question on that is, if they're willing to dupe the sellers and the residents and the people who live here, I don't know why, I didn't read through this as well, but I don't know why we think that it's not going to change from what's being proposed on paper, which from what other people have said isn't even something that, you know, they know what they're reading. So I don't know why we're all willing to say, hey, let's take our chance. I think the town should keep it. And if they need a parking lot, build a Rafua parking lot. Whatever wants to happen next, you can do what happens next with this.
Yes, sir.
Ellie Schulman, eleven Rodman Place. Just have a question.
Is. What's your name?
Ellie Schulman. Question is if this annexation, if it's going to expand the so-called air mile. Does anyone have an answer for that? I'll assume that, I'll assume that they intend to expand the so-called air mile, the Jew-free zone as it was described. That would be, that would mean that the town of Ramapo is agreeing with their stated policy. We don't agree that Jews shouldn't live there, but the village of New Square thinks that Jews shouldn't live in that zone. So if the town of Ramapo agrees with that, then I guess that's what, that's what that would mean. Thank you.
If anybody else wishes to speak? Anybody? Uh, yes, sir.
My name is Stephen Schwartz, twenty-one Bridlewood Road. I'm sorry, I didn't fill out the paper because I wasn't.
It's fine.
I wasn't expecting to speak. I want to speak on a slightly off-topic. I have a coworker who belongs to New Square. He's against what they're doing with all the people that they're talking about. But he's afraid to speak up because his children will be kicked out of the schools and now they will not be let back in. So I want to make it clear that the people. That these people don't resent, don't represent the majority of their neighborhood, what they represent as themselves. And I fear for their community. Thank you.
Is there any other people that wish to speak? Doesn't appear that anybody is indicating they wish to speak. So at this point, we have, I'll ask our attorney and I think the village's attorney is here as well. The options we have in terms of the continuation of the, the next step would be.
Right. So the board could potentially leave the public hearing open and continue it at a later date. They could leave the public comment period open and accept written submissions. You could close the public hearing. You could reserve decision. You could make a determination tonight to approve or deny the annexation. So you have a lot of options on, on what you do from here.
In terms of keeping the hearing open and having a later date, my belief, and please verify this, is that it can't be more than ten days past tonight's date.
Correct.
Okay. At this point, we've heard a number of people speak. My suggestion would be if we were to close the hearing tonight, that we do what we have traditionally done the last number of years, more, we've had public hearings before the town board, which is to allow a written comment period of, I would suggest, ten days. Allow people to mail or email or drop off any written comments, whether they spoke or not. They would still be allowed to submit any written materials they want to be part of the record and for the boards to consider. So that's my suggestion at this stage. That we obviously not make a decision until a later date if we've had a chance to.
Public comment period right now, although it's not closed. If you're not up at the podium, please don't.
What is everybody's pleasure? So do we need a motion of the combined boards or each board separately?
Make a separate motion.
All right. So I'll call upon a member of the town board to make a motion to.
And just to be clear, the, the both boards don't have to agree. They could, you, you have the ability to make your own motions, make your own determinations on how, you know, how you proceed.
Thank you. So I think the town board, the proposal is that we close the hearing, but we allow written submission for the next ten days. Anybody wish to make that motion?
On, on the motion.
Well, there's no motion yet.
On the question, I'm sorry, before the motion. It appears that.
It appears that we have, and counsel, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Is it possible to uh continue, as the supervisor said, public comment? But can we somehow split the annexation into two parts so that we can move forward with the review I have? Meaning we could actually complete the parking lot that's so desperately needed for uh those seeking healthcare? And then revisit the industrial part one and two so that our board and uh Square's board could come somehow collaborating on approving that? Is that a possibility?
I mean, I would recommend doing everything together. I suppose if you wanted to grant a portion of the let me think this through. Um, if you wanted to grant a portion of it, I suppose you might be able to do that and, and, and
But I think you're suggesting that be done at, at the same time, not
Probably move them.
Piecemeal.
Does it have to be? Okay, that was my question.
Okay, so we're still waiting. Does anybody want to make a motion? Okay, Councilman Winu makes the motion. Seconded by Deputy Supervisor Charles. So uh voted the Ramapo Town Board all in favor of the motion to close the public hearing but accept written comment for 10 days after today. Uh, by, in other words, 10 days from today would be September 20th by close of business 5:00 PM. Comments either brought to the town clerk's office or emailed to Mr. Posner, what's your official email? Clerk@ramapo.org. Clerk@ramapo.org. So we have a motion to second all in favor. I
I.
Opposed, abstaining. That motion carries. So now it's up to the, the village board to
They would also, they would make their own motion for how they would like to proceed after tonight. Can you just speak into the microphone so that we can get it on the, on reporting?
Yes, I will call a motion the same as the town to close the public hearing, keep the public written comments open for 10 days.
Okay, so then the public hearing is closed, but both boards will consider written, will accept written submissions by September 20th, delivered to the town clerk or emailed to the town clerk at clerk@ramapo.org. Uh, what about, should it also, people have the option sending to the village, or should it just be to the town clerk? I, I don't know. It'll all become part of the record. Very good. So then, at this point, uh, I think we could just adjourn. I don't think we need a motion, do we? We just uh
Going back.
Well, I will know because we're closing the hearing. So all that happens after the 10 days is that each board could then independently decide on the applications, on the petitions.
But would that be the 22nd after the hot holidays?
Comments, all of them. So, and they say today is the 20th.
Make it that Monday then, yeah. Well, I, I think we would just, it'd be up to each board to put it on their, their relevant agendas after that. We don't have to have a joint hearing to move. Each board can move separately. Mm-hmm. Okay, okay. Very good. Then I think we, uh, we are included. Very good. Thank you, everybody. Do we need a motion to adjourn? So call for a motion. Deputy Supervisor makes a motion to adjourn. Councilman Rosson seconds all in favor. I
I.
Motion opposed, abstaining, motion carries. You adjourn. Okay. We are adjourned.
Okay.
Thanks.